I'm going to call the meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, March 10th, 2020. Welcome, everyone. Thanks for attending. The five council members are present. First order of our business is approval of minutes for February 11th, the regular council meeting, and March 3rd, the special council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to either one? Hearing none. The minutes for both are approved by unanimous consent. Okay, now we have public input. Anyone from the public? Please come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and you have five minutes to speak. Okay, we'll go on to streets and sidewalks. And did you want Josiah to go first, or did you?
Yeah, I was gonna say, mine pretty much hinges off of Josiah's.
Okay. Josiah?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I submitted a written report, which is up on the screen there. I'll touch base on these. Just an update, so we approved the Olive Court construction last meeting go-around, so all the documents and contracts have been signed and returned. We're probably gonna have a pre-construction meeting on the 24th of February with that construction, and again, the late start date's April 13.
Of March?
March, yeah. March 24th is the date we're looking at with the contractor. So, everything is moving ahead at this point. Oh, I guess I should say, we're gonna send out a letter to everybody in Olive and Limer Court, updating them and letting them know what's happened and who was awarded the project and what to expect. The next item is the street sweeping discussion. And so, we received the proposal for street sweeping, which was attached to the report. The changes from last year was a 3% increase in the rate of the hourly rate for the truck, and the landfill fees per ton of material they drop off stayed the same. The landfill hasn't changed that rate in probably three or four years. So, as I noted in my report, based on the amount of hours that we've seen over the last four years, I think is what I looked at, you'd be over, we'd be over what we had originally budgeted for street sweeping for this year. So, what I did, I talked to Pellinger, and I said, sort of that line item D there, you know, all right, the only way we kind of control this is if we cap the hours that you have and sort of provide you some guidelines on which streets obviously need it the most and sort of work down that list. Is that acceptable to you, and that's fine with them? With the goal that we try and have them, you know, get through as much as possible. That 20-hour range was what we had seen probably in the last, like, year five to eight ago. So, they're okay with that, and that'd be, I guess, that was my recommendation, that we work with them, sort of limited at 20 hours, which is about two and a half full days around the truck, around the streets, and see where we end up at that time. So, that's my recommendation and proposal. And I guess if there's any feedback-
I think the streets are much cleaner this year because of the not as much sand and salt, but lighter winter.
Yeah, we talked about that, and then they mentioned that as well. You know, with as much snowfall as we had last year, we had a lot of material put down. So, are there any questions about that, or concerns, or?
Well, I wanted you to discuss the date of scheduling.
Okay. What we're targeting is the week of April 6th through 10th, the week before Easter. It's fairly early to get that material off the street, you know, before we get into rains and it just all washes down into our storm sewers. But it's also after the spring leaf vacuuming, so we're not picking up a lot of leaf debris in the street sweeper. So, I think the date will work, and they're okay with doing that date. They have it available that week.
Are there any other questions for him about that? I wanted to, you had put about the streets, that you had about 40,000 left in this year's budget, right, Josiah, and that you had, would you want to review that so the public can hear that, too?
Yeah, I will. So, that's money put forward for like local and arterial street repairs, and generally, it's after the winter and we see what, you know, kind of didn't make it. And so, I've got four spots. One is on Melrose, down by Golf View, where the panel, two and a half panels blew out for arterial streets, and then for local streets, we have a section, these are all west of Sunset, at Golf View and Highland. Highland comes down the hill to Golf View as it comes around the curve. There's two panels there that have broke apart quite a bit, to the point where you can see the rebar in it, so those are not patchable, so that's a spot. There's another manhole on Ridge View, similar to Melrose, that had a blowout with two panels. And then, the final spot is the asphalt overlay where Mahaska meets Oak Crest. Just down from Sunset, you start to head down, Mahaska's your first street on your right. That whole right side has blown out, washed away, and has been that way for a while. So, those are the four spots we're looking at.
Okay. Are there questions about that? I wanted to talk a little bit, and that's why Steve Kuhl is here. I told the council that I talked to John Danos, the bond attorney, about funding for these street projects, and he said, he told me that if you bond between, I told him, say 100,000 to 250,000. And he said, it's a low dollar amount and will likely be placed with a local bank as opposed to the bond market. And he said his cost would be $4,000. And then, banks don't typically charge anything except the interest on the loans. And so, the cost of that would be $4,000 plus interest. But we also talked about last month about looking at the sale from Olive Court streets, Olive Court houses for the street project. And that's with interest now, it's about 256,000. And so, you know, I thought that might be a good option to look at. Use the 94,000 of that for the Olive Court construction project. Isn't it 94,000? That we, I think, Steve, you told me 94,000, Steve Kuhl, for Olive Court. And then, 97, if, and then, the project on Golf View wouldn't be until, it would be in the 21, but it would, that's 97,000 right now, the estimate. And then, the 11,500 for the bus stops areas. So, I added that up, and it seemed like I got roughly about 50, 52, 53,000 left. And I asked Josiah if he could look at some of these streets. Remember, we were looking at, the council was looking at Highland and Oak Crest and some areas there, and he already broke down one of those to the Mahaska, Oak Crest, broke it down into a smaller thing. And Josiah, could you come back in April and maybe have some estimates on some of those projects, too?
That would fit that remaining amount, is what you're saying?
Maybe.
Right.
Maybe. I mean, the other projects that were listed were the curb cuts.
Yeah, we had the curb ramps on Sunset.
Or curb ramps. They were like 30,000 each.
We had some of the other asphalt repairs on west of Sunset, but those were the full-length streets, so like I did with Mahaska, we could break those down into smaller pieces, just doing around intersections or shorter sections.
So, does council think that it's better to use that money or to borrow bond money?
Well, interest rates are awfully cheap right now.
They are cheap.
I'm wondering, you know, there's a raft of questions, and I had to keep my mouth shut, but I was just wondering, we're alerting people on Limer Court, but we're not doing anything on Limer Court, is that right? We're just doing Olive Court right now?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, sorry. So, we're just doing Olive Court, but as Olive Court is closed-
It's just a convenience, like our courtesy?
Yeah, because they'll see more traffic, right? Because as portions of Olive are closed-
And I know, last time, and I was looking at Oak Crest east of Sunset instead of west of Sunset, but then I drove west of Sunset, and Oak Crest has got curbs and sidewalks, and everything is pretty much intact. I mean, and then I looked at Cozer Avenue, and it seems like Cozer's a major cut-through, and it doesn't have any curbs and gutters on much of the street. And I was wondering, Josiah, that, you know, how important are curbs and gutters?
Depends on the person, I would say. Well-
It seems like more of a distressed situation, certainly.
It depends on the drainage, right, and how much water's there. So, like what you'd see on Cozer, that doesn't have curbs, is similar to Olive Court, the one we're redoing, it did not have curbs, so the water comes down the sides of the roads and it's off the pavement, and eventually, over time, that ruts out the sides, right?
Yeah.
So, whether that's important or not, I mean, obviously, like with Olive Court, the pavement condition has just gotten to the point where it's, you know, you can't even patch it together anymore.
And you expect a similar thing to happen on Cozer because of the lack of curbs and gutters?
Well, not necessarily. Olive Court has, it's got a slope, too, but at the bottom, it kind of all flattened out.
Yeah.
And so, I think that led to some of those issues. Cozer, that section without curbs has a good fall, so that water's moving as opposed to sitting.
A lot of it's moving down my sidewalk.
Yeah, I mean, that, I'm not saying it's not, but it's got fall, so you might not see the same thing you saw at Olive, which had lots of low spots.
I guess I'm wondering if maybe we should push Cozer up a little bit because of the distressed nature of not having any curbs. And, you know, I had that conversation with Louise about Oak Crest, and it seems to me Oak Crest, relative to Cozer Street, isn't nearly as distressed a condition. So, anyway, we'll talk about that.
Well, and that'd be fairly easy, because we did do a cost opinion on replacing Cozer.
Okay.
You said that would be a pretty major project, though, to fix what's wrong.
It would be. It'd be similar to Olive Court. I mean, it's not a retrofit in that situation. And the thing that we'd have run into on Cozer is that when you look at the street from the side, the sidewalks and the street are all about the same elevation. So, if you add curbs onto the street, now you've blocked the flow back into the sidewalks, if that makes sense.
The flow off the street wouldn't be blocked. I mean, it'd be blocked by the curbs.
Which would then prevent it from coming from the properties into the street, so you'd actually have to remove that street and then drop it, let's say, six inches, because curbs are, or maybe four inches or six, because now you're gonna drop the street, but you're gonna add that height back on the sides, and you don't want to, you still want water to come down into it and not flow back in pond in the sidewalks.
Gotcha.
So, yeah, it's a full reconstruction. It's not a retrofit. And of course, there's trees there and driveways, and so, yeah, it's a major-
And a lot of the driveways are crushed rock driveways instead of cement driveways on Cozer?
No.
Yeah, I think so.
One, that I can-
Is that just one?
I think they're mostly paved, yeah.
Okay.
I can only think of one. I mean, there may be more, but-
It was big in my mind, and maybe I was thinking, pardon me?
Maybe crushed cement, broken.
Well, I was talking to a friend of mine, and he said, "It's crushed rock, not gravel." So, I'm trying to be careful about that.
One of them's pretty much mine.
Is it?
So, Josiah, I know we had talked about this in 2018, maybe, but it would be nice if we could have a comprehensive list of projects that you would prioritize, not that we, not that it would be set in.
I think we've got that, I think-
Well, it'd be nice to have one that we see and maybe can publish, and people can see what's-
What's priority. Yeah, because it usually gets pared down for each budget year, as opposed to seeing all of them together.
And seeing what we have, what we-
More comprehensive.
How you would prioritize it in terms of need, instead of maybe people saying, "Well, you got that because you're on the council," or-
Well, how you prioritize, your list of priorities, and then why you prioritize? Is it going to be an issue potentially down the road with, you know, as it continues to erode, it'll just become more problematic and get more costly, you know, whatever? I think, for me at least, it's, okay, there's a lot of projects that seem like we need to do, what's priority and why, you know?
Good.
I don't know if that's-
The interesting thing is, and this is something I harped on probably last meeting, you're sick of it, but we are only using 10% of our bonding capacity, and interest rates are at 100-year lows. So, if there's ever a time that we wanted to start using that resource to fund our infrastructure, then we should definitely consider it. I don't have any problem with using the $50,000 or of our cash, or we go into bonding, but I think that we should explore bonding, and Iowa City has 25% of their bonding, for example, and they've been able to keep their three-star rating or four-star rating, whatever the hell is. And I think that we should consider that very strongly. It's been a, it's been tough for us to do that because we haven't been growing. Well, we're starting to grow between the hotel and the OUP project. So, I think that the residents of University Heights kind of would appreciate that a little bit, a lot, as a matter of fact, so.
They might, and they might not.
They might not. It wouldn't raise taxes, I don't think.
That's the-
You sure?
Absolutely.
Well, that would be something that we would want to factor in, I think that-
I think you'd need to make sure of that.
Well, that would, yeah, sure, we would do that, but I would probably agree with that. Money, the cost of money is so low right now, and if, because we have to use a portion of any hotel motel tax for tourism, and if a portion of that can be used for, in whatever, I don't know, the specifics, we have to look into, but if a portion of that can be used for infrastructure, sidewalks, and that does qualify, well, that's a really great thing to use it on. And if you look at the payments and how much is coming in, and how much is 50% of our hotel motel, I mean, that might pay for it, you know, I don't know. We just have to look at it.
Some money has been, what, we looked at that for the Swisher tract. There's some hotel motel tax for the Swisher tract, there's some lost money for the Swisher tract. So, yeah, I mean, if you make sure that you're not raising taxes, that's one thing, but if you're-
Yeah, and I don't think that, I mean, this'll be widely discouraged, but I think that, for my personal opinion, if I can get a reasonable return, then, you know, if I can let, I can increase the taxes somewhat and have a street that I can drive on, or I can have a dirt street, and, you know, the taxes will remain as they have been. I'm not crazy about raising the taxes. I still think there ought to be a lot of probity, but I think that there's a unique opportunity because of interest rates being as low as they are, and we're not using anything, I mean, 10%? I mean, you know, and everyone says, gee, aren't we smart in, you know, keeping everything low? But at some point, you have to say 25%, you know, if we want to accelerate these projects, we have the flexibility of being able to do that. And the other thing I'd say is that with our bonding capacity, I think we should look at those bonds, and if there's any way we can refinance them at lower interest rates, which the federal rate, I think, is 0.8%, and it's been, you know, more than double that, almost triple that. And if you've got, you know, a couple million bucks, let that adds up.
So, you're gonna get a more comprehensive list. I think that's gonna help, too, right? To get a more comprehensive list, work on that. And then, depending on if council's gonna go ahead with goal-setting, those kind of things, I think-
Fits right in.
That kind of fits in there, too. But it's good conversation to see.
And maybe we can answer Lisa's, her question about if it would increase the tax base, tax costs, what would be the impact of that? Do we have any idea?
And I'm sure maybe we'll get into the comprehensive plan, but one of the things in there was a five-year budget, right? Instead of, you know, going year to year, and I think that would probably answer a lot of our questions, potentially, too.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
That's good.
Thanks, Steve. You should go. Let's see, I'm going to skip the mayor's report and the hotel project update. I told him to come about 8:00. And so, I have two guests here tonight, and Sarah Walz is here from the MPO, Associate Transportation Planner, to discuss the updated draft of the comprehensive plan. Thanks, Sarah, for coming.
You're welcome. I am Sarah Walz. I work with the Metropolitan Planning Organization of Johnson County, so we work for you. You come up with things that you need from us on a yearly basis, and sometimes they're small projects and stuff like that.
Oh, you know what? The microphone is behind you, which is crazy.
It's very live, so-
I don't know what happened there, because that one is quite loud.
So, as I was saying, we work for you, and so, on an annual basis, you have sometimes small projects. In this case, it was a larger project that we did. So, because we, I had sent Louise this afternoon when you were at an important meeting-
There you go, that's better.
The draft that you'll put out for the public to see. So, really, tonight, I'm just kind of here to summarize sort of the process that we went through, and when you all have had a chance to review the plan and the public has had a chance to look at it, we can do a more in-depth review of what's in the plan, but I just wanted to give a basic summary. The comprehensive plan, what it is, is it establishes a broad vision for your community, so including goals and strategies, some things you sort of got into tonight about development, preservation, infrastructure, investments. And the plan provides a general framework for things like your zoning ordinances, policies related to development and investment, sort of responds to those things. But the comprehensive plan also considers things like quality of life. What is the vision, what is it that makes University Heights special? What is it you want to preserve, the style of the development, the feel of the community, things like that? So, the existing comprehensive plan that you had identified a number of important goals for the community, and I'm just gonna run through those real quick. Improving the financial viability of the community, increasing revenues and reducing costs, that was a goal in your current plan. Creating neighborhood destinations and community gathering spaces, parks, local serving businesses, providing greater predictability as to where development or redevelopment could occur, what kinds of redevelopment to allow or encourage, balancing owner-occupied and rental housing, long-term and short-term housing, improving pedestrian and bicycle safety and calming traffic on busy streets. And so, over the last eight years, University Heights has taken a number of steps to reach those goals, the redevelopment of this property, the St. Andrews Church property to the building that we're in now, which now hoses, holds a more diverse housing stock. It's added to the diversity of your housing stock. You have local serving businesses. You have a new community center, and you have new revenues coming in. In 2016, residents of University Heights completed a community visioning survey for the Melrose corridor and for your streets, thinking about making the streets serve your community better, pedestrians and bicyclists and motorists, and also be more of an identifiable space for the community. Redevelopment of the 3.75-acre tract for the Marriott Hotel. With the hotel motel tax, this will add additional revenues to your community and be an amenity, hopefully, for your community. Purchase of the 11-point-acre Swisher tract that provides you a buffer from the university and some of the open space that the community has desired, and you adopted the rental housing cap, which, you know, subsequently, that's been overturned, but that was an attempt to address something that came out of your plan. And so, for a community of this size and a community that's not physically expanding, you're not, you are not annexing land into the city, those are major changes. I think everybody would agree. The large sites that you had available for development are no longer available for development. So, that was the reason to update the plan. With the completion of those major projects, the previous city council, and some of you were on that previous city council, believed it was appropriate to pause for a second, step back, take stock of the changes, ask what if any additional development might be appropriate, what was worth preserving, how best to reinvest in the community, what's best for University Heights. Sorry about that. So, in putting together the draft plan, the MPO staff looked to the previous comprehensive plan. You also had a number of studies and surveys that had been done over years, and we looked at those. We put out the online survey to residents and property owners and business owners in University Heights and asked them to respond to that. That was in the winter of last year, and then subsequently, in the spring, we held an open house here in your community center and talked about the results and looked at things neighborhood by neighborhood, and what was, what people were looking for improvements in their neighborhood, how receptive they were to any small-scale redevelopment, things like that. And the result is the draft plan that we have for you, and it is a draft plan, which means that now you'll have an opportunity to discuss this with each other and with the community and decide, you know, it's your plan, it's your community plan. We've done the best that we can to put forward the things that we think the community is looking for and some good advice on how to plan for the future. And so, the plan should also help you move forward as you look at strategic planning. Somebody mentioned, you know, doing a five-year budget and things like that, you know, that it should help you with that. A concern emphasized in your existing plan was the revenue, the lack of revenue to pay for improvements in things like infrastructure, and you can now see in your horizon that you're going to have revenues. And you're on a stronger financial footing, and that allows you to move forward with some things. So, and in the plan, while we do identify that there might be some small opportunities for small-scale development, I think the plan in general focuses on what you have in place and enhancing and promoting and improving the things that you have in place. And so, hopefully, that's what you'll find in the plan. But as we go forward, when you've all had a chance to review it and the community has a chance to provide some input, we're happy to talk about it more in depth and answer questions, and then, of course, update and make changes as you think are appropriate.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Sarah, one of the things that you highlighted in your plan, and I thought was very interesting, is the percentage of owner-occupied versus investor-owned properties. And it looked like investor-owned properties, and it might have been during the moratorium, but maybe not, was, hasn't changed since 2010 substantially. I mean, it was 46% then, it's 46% now. And owner-occupied properties are about the same, but their total, the old houses are about 33% of our housing stock.
Right.
And I've been challenged on that percentage, but it's pretty high. And I wondered if you had any input as to, you know, our idea is that we move on the margins now, we reduce the amount of investor-owned housing and encourage owner-occupied housing. Do you have any idea as to how we could do that?
I think that's the question that all our communities in Johnson County are grappling with right now. You know, I do think that investment in your infrastructure and making things more inviting for permanent residents is a reasonable thing. As for any regulations that prevent people from having rental, you know-
I'd like it to be a carrot more than a stick.
Yes, yeah. And I also think that- Yes, yeah. And I also think that, I think you, as much as owner occupancy is important, I wouldn't sell short the idea of long-term residency. I mean, rental property, there's nothing wrong with rental property. What people want to see is property that's reinvested in, that contributes to the community, that invites people and a diversity of people at different ages, different stages of families, to live long-term. And, you know, so I think you should look at that as well. That I don't think you can look at it as, you know, I think there's a tendency for people to see, think rental is bad, homeowner is good. But I think maybe really what you're looking for is more longer-term resident, not people turning over every year.
Yeah, I was impressed by the percentage of our population that's in the healthcare and educational fields. And it's whether it's rental property or owner-occupied property that, you know, we have a very high-quality group of tenants generally.
Yeah.
Let me ask one other question. I'm sorry about that. The, have you looked into ancillary units and, you know, not, I guess the pejorative term is mother-in-law units, but that can be, has it been done as owner-occupied in order to keep people in their houses longer?
Typically, it is done as, so I will answer this. The ADUs, as they call them, the accessory dwelling units, are rental units that are paired with an owner-occupied property. So it might be, the most common example is you have a house, and then maybe above the garage, there's an apartment. And they, we've done this in Iowa City. The zoning code allows for that. And, you know, I don't know the business end of it well, but there is an expense that comes with developing a dwelling unit. So it's not necessarily an inexpensive thing to do. And depending on the price of the original house that you're dwelling with that, that you already have on the property, whether investing that much more in the property makes sense, makes the original house less affordable, that's just a question. But it is something that, that a number of communities throughout the country are adopting, are allowing the accessory dwelling unit. Iowa City, I think with the change in the zoning code that took place in 2005, they opened it up for the accessory dwelling units. We haven't seen a lot of them because it is an expensive proposition.
Does it work in terms of keeping older people in their houses longer?
I don't think, I think it probably depends on the market, and I don't think that there's, I could draw a conclusion from what Iowa City has experienced.
Thanks.
But I think it's an attractive thing for families, you know, if you're, if someone's trying to take in an elderly parent. I mean, certainly, but then it comes when you sell the house to the next person, what they'll use it for.
So as we move forward with this plan, we're going to have to get, of course, everybody needs to review it, including the public.
Right.
Get more public input, council, staff input. And it's quite long and lengthy, so.
It's actually not too bad. The appendix is a bit long, but it shouldn't be too bad. But I did give you, I did provide a draft that you can share with the public today. And I know that you were caught up in meetings with the
I was.
health situation in Johnson County today, but I know that'll, that'll be available.
Yeah. And so I think we're going to need at least a couple of months.
Yeah.
Since we really meet once a month, to get more input from the council, staff, from the public.
Right.
And then the next step forwards is you'd, we'd have a discussion about that. You'd help us with that. And then provide changes, whatever.
Yeah.
And then the adoption would be maybe early summer.
Yeah.
You know, next two months.
I mean, it is your plan.
April, May.
Yeah.
Then maybe June. Okay. I just want to get a timeline for the council of what to expect. And then, but I'm willing to take some public input and maybe, Lisa, you've helped me before. You want to help with getting that input? And then, or, and maybe.
What's the format of that being? How to get that input?
Yeah, how do you?
Typically, typically, you would probably take it at this meeting. I mean.
Yeah, do it during a meeting.
Yeah. So we could come and do a short presentation and answer questions, but ultimately, it's really up for the council and the residents of University Heights to, you know, approve it or suggest changes. I mean, it is your plan.
So I'll put it on the website, and then people can.
Put it on the website, and people comment.
And then publicize.
And then we'll put it
Yeah.
On it as an agenda item to discuss further.
And certainly, I don't know if your website allows it, but if you, if people can submit questions ahead of time, then we can be prepared to answer them. That's an option, too. And you could even publish answers to some questions on your, I mean, it's up to what you have the bandwidth to do, but that's an option as well.
What do you think of that, Lisa? She's going to look into that. She's our web person.
Well, it's kind of nice for people who don't like to speak in public, if they want to ask a question or give them input, and they're not comfortable standing up.
Well, especially given the situation that we find ourselves in Johnson County right now, there might be people who have questions that can't come to a meeting, and we're happy to help in any way we can to answer those.
Okay, that's good. Okay. Any other questions for Sarah?
I just have a comment. The plan is very well-written, and I thank you very much for the work that you've done for us.
It's been interesting to work on. We've really enjoyed it.
Yeah, you might.
And with all of you and with the previous council as well.
You might mention your staff that's been working on it, too, their names. I mean, I don't.
Yeah. So Emily Bothell, my colleague, and Frank Waiseth, we've mostly been working on it. And then, of course, Kent Ralston and Brad Newman help as well. So, and we've had some help from our interns, too, so.
Yeah, very good. Thanks again.
You're great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have Karen Kurt is here. And Karen is the Executive Director of East Central Iowa Council of Government, or EC-COG, as we call it. And Karen, Casey and I met with you. You sent around an email about doing workshop, you know, what you can do. And so I thought maybe you'd like to listen to some of the comprehensive plan before we went to you. And so. Oh, yeah, there you go. You're both planners. I sent the council the proposal, your proposal to them.
So yes, my name is Karen Kurt, and I'm the relatively new Executive Director for EC-COG. And I don't know to what extent folks here are familiar with EC-COG, so I'm just going to spend a couple seconds talking about it. So we're really, I'd say, a sister agency to the Johnson County MPO. But because you're part of the Iowa City metro region, you don't interact with us as much as you do with them. But like them, we were established through a 28-year agreement with six counties, which means we don't make a profit. We're really here to serve our communities within those counties. We do a lot of things that are more regional in nature. So for example, the 380 express bus was an EC-COG initiative, and we manage the contracts for that service and the grants. We do a lot of watershed work and working in the Clear Creek watershed, writing the plan right now. In addition to that, we do the transportation planning and some of the land use planning that the Johnson County MPO does. But we would do it for the rural parts of Johnson Lynn, and then we do it for all of Washington Jones, Iowa and Benton Counties. So that's just a little bit about us. We're based in Iowa City, and we've got 13 folks that are members of our team. So I have been in my role for about five months, five to six months, which means, I describe it as being at the 50% mark. 50% of the time, I have a clue. 50% of the time, I feel like I don't know what you're talking about. So bear with me. But so as Louise had mentioned, one of the things that we had put out was that the goal-setting process is, it's something that councils typically want to do. It's a skill set that we feel that we have because we facilitate a lot as part of the planning process. And the University of Iowa's, I think it was the Public Affairs Institute, was that what the official name was, used to do a lot of this in this area, but they were disbanded. So now we know that there's a gap in that service. And so as Louise had mentioned, we had put it out in our newsletter, and you were the first community to call to potentially engage in that service. I think the timing is really interesting. If you think about the comprehensive plan, that's really your long-range planning document, so that's looking out 10-plus years. And so the goal-setting is really about kind of operationalizing, I think, some of what those long-term goals are in terms of what do you want to accomplish in the next couple of years. And sometimes you have some very pressing needs, and you have things that just pop up that may or may not be in your comprehensive plan. But at other times, you're kind of reflecting on what that plan is and trying to figure out how you can start to work on those longer-term initiatives. So with that, I know you have the proposal. It's really designed as an internal goal-setting process. Louise and Casey had challenged me to think about it as a two-hour process to try and fit it into a relatively short timeframe, recognizing that you have very busy schedules. So I came up with a plan that I think can do that, but will need to move fairly quickly. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have about.
Isn't your plan contingent on us doing a lot of, a little bit of homework beforehand?
Yes.
Otherwise, it's not going to be as successful, so we have to read the, you know, what you recommend.
I would say that's very much true. So if you decide that this is a path you want to take, then I think we'd take some of the questions I outlined, make sure that those get distributed out to the council members, and then perhaps assign somebody who would be the person to make sure that everyone gets that work completed on time.
Isn't the alternative pretty much moving from, you know, a reactive position, you know, one crisis to another, and not really having them fit in in some kind of, you know, priorities that we can, that we can actually proceed on? And that seems to me to be the alternative. And that's, that doesn't excite me much. Your plan excites me a lot. But anyway, I point that out.
I would definitely agree that that's a benefit. And one of the things about being an elected service, there's a constant kind of change in the team members. And so I think with annual goal-setting or biannual goal-setting, it gives each new complement of team members a chance to kind of gather and reflect and think about what it is they want to do as a group. And that's different from a corporate board of directors where they may not have that type of fluidity in their leadership.
Originally, she thought it should be, when we were meeting, when Casey and I, that it could be, maybe we need four hours. But she was trying to figure out the city and figure out what we do. And then she came up with this alternative of a two-hour, and then we do homework in front of it so that we kind of have an idea of where to go. And I wanted you to meet her, too, because in learning of your background, you were a city manager. And so you have a very good background of how, you know, and, and I was impressed that you knew about, you know, development is hard for people. You expressed that in the city that you were in, that it kind of reminded me of us, but a bigger scale. It was a city outside of Minneapolis, right? And so they were struggling with development.
Redevelopment.
Redevelopment, similar to us. And I felt like she had a good understanding, too, of that. And I'm excited about it, and I think it would be a good opportunity. I just, I think we've got to do it pretty quickly because it's already middle of March, nearly the middle of March. And then, you know, we have spring break next week. And then it's towards the end of the month. And we are meeting on the 24th of March, but with spring break there, I thought, I don't know how we can get that homework done, you know, or if that would even work. You know, I'm just trying to look at what works and what, I don't know, what does council think about this?
Because we had talked about doing some goal-setting on the 24th.
Yeah, we did. I mean, but I don't know if we can get the homework done between now and then, or, and I don't know how it works with your schedule, or, you know, that kind of thing. I mean.
The homework is about three hours.
I can get my homework done, I think.
It's about three hours. That's what it took, yeah, that's what it took me. And I'm a slow.
Oh, you already worked on it?
Yeah. And I'm a slow writer, I mean.
What is, what is the work that we're reviewing?
You're asked to, you know, the things you like about University Heights, the problems that you see with University Heights, the.
It's in the proposal in that email.
The initiatives.
If you can open.
The initiatives that you'd like to, like to take. And it funnels things down, so it really forces you to have some consensus and some buy-in on what you'd like the priorities to be.
Lisa, do you want to read a few of the questions, just?
List three to five things that make you proud when you think of your city. Identify three to five accomplishments from the last three years. Identify any future opportunities you see on the horizon. Identify any concerns or threats you see on the horizon. Name any projects that are currently in process that should be continued to completion, including capital budget items. I think that's homework. Is that the end of the homework?
We would also have people reflect on what they think the key goals should be as well, as part of the homework.
Okay.
And then how?
And then the last one is, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mayor. Complete the following sentence. I would consider my service on the city council successful if. So I think it's going to take a little thought. It's not just something you're going to dash off. And were you shaking your head, Doug?
Well, I'm on vacation. I'm not doing a whole lot, no.
You're not going to be sitting on the beach.
Not going to be thinking about Iowa City, huh?
It's not Iowa City.
I see.
So are you thinking?
Well, and how much ahead of time do you need to look at these things? Or do you need?
I don't need to see them.
You don't need to see them?
I just think it will go, I think it will go best if people have them prepared, though, when they, when they come to the meeting. That will save you some time.
So I was thinking we should look at a calendar, and I didn't bring my phone. I left it at home. And, you know, I usually put my calendar there, but if, so the 24th sounds like that might be a push since he's going to be drinking a margarita on the beach.
I just had a question about how much the service costs. And so for University Heights, we're actually going to use you as a pilot, because we haven't done this for communities before. It's a new service for us. And so we're going to charge just $100, which is intended to cover some of our travel and material expenses.
It's in the proposal.
Yeah. So will we have staff attend?
It's up to the council. I think it would be good to have the police chief there, the city attorney there, and possibly the city clerk there. I think that gives a good background and history, and it's historic value. I know it, there's a cost to some of that, but I think it's worth it. I mean, I want this to be a good process and have a good outcome. And Steve's been here the longest of anyone, and he has a pretty good history of, of things that I can't seem to remember of University Heights. That's very helpful as we move forward, too. And so I was thinking that, but.
Yeah, I think that we value that input, for sure.
But how's your schedule look, Karen?
I am not getting a signal here, so.
Oh, yeah. I kind of know that, yeah.
I'm not able to tell you.
Okay. We'll just do an email.
Okay.
You know, we'll start an email of what works, you know, and everybody can put in a date. How about that?
There can be some value to doing it off your meeting cycle, just because of the nature of the process, to put you in kind of a different frame of mind. But it's your decision, of course.
Any other questions for Karen? Okay. Well, I think we ought to have a goal to get done with it in April. If not, no later than sometime in April, right? done with it in April. If not, no later than sometime in April, right? Yeah, thank you so much for coming, Karen.
Thank you.
I'm going to go on to the legal report. Steve, you have first consideration.
Right. So the only thing on the report was, at the last meeting, when the council made some changes to the rental housing code, one of those changes concerning, concerned sort of shielding or from public view, street view, trash containers when they weren't, you know, when they weren't set out for collection. And the question, the direction from the council was, well, can't we make that apply to owner-occupied homes, not just rental homes? And so I tried to keep it as simple as I could and just move the, or incorporate the same language that was added to the rental housing code into the, it's ordinance 193, but it concerns, you know, the refuse in recycling services. So that's, that's what ordinance 246 attempts to do.
So do we want to...
We need a motion.
Yeah. Why don't you start with the motion, and then we'll have second, and then discussion? I'm sorry. Is there a motion?
Yeah, a motion.
Motion by Bobby.
I'll second it.
And second by Casey. Sorry. Discussion.
So I wanted to bring this up. I probably should have thought of this before. This sounds similar to the way the porta potty ordinance is written. Not visible from the street in front of the house. And what we found last season was there are places in town that doesn't work well. It's not accomplishing the goal of not being visible, and there are places where somebody's backyard, but somebody's front yard, and it's just inherently unfair to say they can put something, but the house behind them can't. So is there some way we could address that?
I think it's different, because this only addresses the front, right? It's so, and that doesn't in porta potties.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I remember the porta potty issue coming up in various ways at various times, and I don't remember how we addressed that then. Do you?
It seemed, the way, I went around with Troy last season, and it was visible from the front, the street in front of the house. It can't, it can't be visible from the street in front of the house, but...
And that's what this says, right?
Right, but that, that's not working for porta potties.
Okay.
And so that, the porta potty needs to be tweaked at some point.
I see.
And I don't remember. I thought we had looked at some diagrams. You had, I thought you had brought this up about. Do you want it straight in front of the house? Do you want it not visible at all? Do you want, I don't remember, but...
Yeah, I had, I was going to propose to that maybe we word this a little differently. I like the intent, and I know, you know, it's the same as in the rental code, so, you know, talk about that. But I like the intent of getting it, you know, out, put away, but not visible from the front of the street. I mean, for people who can only store it on the side of their house, if you can't pull it in the back, that might be, this might just, to me, might feel a bit overly burdened to some people. So I was just wondering if maybe, like, we can word it as though, you know, beyond the front line of that, behind the front line of the house. There's some examples that I found in other city ordinances or, you know, even if we say, you know, it's the best effort, not visible, make it not visible from the street. But, I mean, I'm certainly open, but I just wanted to see what other people think about that.
Because there's a few, it's always the situational, right, houses that cause you to think about the specific language, right? So if, I mean, was it Lori? Did she, someone, someone brought it up, well, it's, it's not visible from the street, but I live on the corner, so it would be visible from the side street, which is not the front of the house. And what do you do in those situations, and how do you regulate that? I don't know. Did I have a great answer?
Well, I don't, I don't have an answer. It's just some of the experiences that we've had, that I think Steve may remember from several years ago. And we still see it. Even with these nice bins, there are places where, that may be at the side of the house, but it's overflowing and it's spilling out. So nobody, you know, in places where people live close together, they don't want their...
Right.
...to be looking at that. I don't know what the answer is. There's screening as a possibility, but screening was not effective with porta potties, because people would just duct tape a piece of flapping over lattice to a porta potty and call it good. So we need to come up with something that's effective, but I don't, I don't...
I, I was just driving around today thinking about this ordinance, and it, do I understand correctly, Steve, that as long as it's not in the front of the house, it can be on the side of the house? And it might be still visible from the street, but at least there's that effort to put it on the side of the house. I noticed there's, there's a lot of, I'll call them 1950s garages, you know, that are not, not well-suited for an R...
Suburban, yeah.
Yeah, and it's, you know, big cars and whatnot. And I know that in my old house, I was either putting the, I had room on the side of the house, and that's probably where I should have put it. I know, it was usually right in front of the garage, and it was clearly, you know, visible. So I think that if we have it on the side of the house, that's the best we can do. And, you know, you know, on after-game days, you know, it's, those are pretty big bins, but they're, they're going to be, they're going to be pretty filled up too, I think.
But I'm not talking about game day.
You aren't? This is, okay.
No, no.
Is it primarily, the issue, I mean, I, is it primarily problematic with certain, I mean, you don't want to create two different standards, but sometimes it seems like you need to. Is it problematic with rental property specifically, would you say? Or would you say just any, not, not even that? Just anyone who?
Well, I guess what I see is generally rentals, but I couldn't...
Right.
...make that distinction.
Yeah.
And then there are people that have garages that could put them in garages, but don't. I mean, I don't mean small garages either.
Yeah.
So I don't have an answer.
It's kind of ironic that we give everybody a big bin, that they happen to be brightly-colored blue, and we find them unsightly, you know? And we made them buy these bins in the first place. So I think we have to have some kind of a compromise. And, you know, I don't know what it looks like, but I think the way the ordinance is written, as long as we're fairly even-handed about it, and say, you know, you can put it on the side, these are like 10,000-foot lots, a lot of them. And there, there isn't a hell of a lot of room on those lots, but if, at least we say, put them on the side, I think that's the best we can do. Unless you've got another idea.
Screening would be one, but making sure that they're closed and not overflowing. I don't know. I mean, but back, not right in front of the house, sure. Or in front of the...
It's complicated, because then there are some times where you really just need to, I mean, I have five kids, so we have lots of garbage, but there are some times where you need to throw an extra bag of garbage in an already full container, and then it's just, it's just impossible. It's an impossible task of keeping a garbage can looking perfect all the time. So I'm, I'm like, I've been going back and forth on this thing, what do we do? And I'm leaning towards, just like you can't see them from the street. And I know that could be burdensome for some people, but...
Well, what's burdensome? What do you guys have to do? You have to drag your carts up to Cozer.
Yeah, and we keep ours in the back. We have a garage, we keep ours in the back. But we have a sidewalk, and we can drag it all the way back. Whereas if we didn't, it would have to be on the side.
Well...
I mean, it's very weird to drag it to Cozer. It's a garbage truck that would come down our street, so yeah.
I just, I don't know.
What do you think, Doug?
It's going to be awful hard to make a one-size-fits-all because of the different dynamics. And, you know, like, say, some houses are built with, you know, zero outlines or next thing to it. I think as long as the intent and a reasonable attempt to hide them as much as possible, I mean, the main thing is that can, up against your house, so the wind doesn't blow them over, varmints knock them over. But then you also have, like, say, the ugly color of the containers to deal with as well. But I, I think if you can make an effort to put them as most inconspicuously without being, you know, curbside view, you know, curb appeal, or their lack of, I think, as long as you show good faith in trying to hide them, I, I, I don't know. Is it going to be a case-by-case where you walk up and say, hey, the city council, we'd like to see you put it over here. We think it would work best here. I mean, I don't know how far you want to be a trash can police, but I don't know.
It's going to be hard to get anything enforced if we're, we can't do.
I remember when they first came, and let me tell you, I talked to Steve Smith and tried to get him to not be bright blue. But he told me, no, that is not going to happen, Louise. I said, you know, dark green kind of matches the landscaping. Nope, that's not going to happen. So I knew they were going to be bright blue, similar to like a porta potty. And I was driving down Melrose, you know, trying to look at the porta potties. And this is, you know, they came in in July, and then the porta potties were coming in in August, you know, September. And I'm driving down, and I thought, I didn't see one porta potty, but I saw a million trash cans, because they just put them up by their garage, or in their yard in the front. And I thought, well, that was more annoying to me than the porta potties. And then I had to...
They galvanized cans.
Yeah, so I think, I think getting them out of the front of the house is a key thing. They're not so unattractive. I mean, they're not as big as porta potties, but...
They're different, you know?
Well, and if people...
With the porta potties, there was a compromise that was, if you, if the portable toilet's not visible from the front street, then you can keep it there the whole season, football season. If it's, if you can't, if you can't make it visible, or if you don't want to make it visible, or if you can't make it not visible, or if you don't want to not make it visible, then you have to, in and out every game, which that's not really, you know...
Not everyone needs a porta potty, right? Like, everyone has to have a...
Right, right.
I think it was my hostess that wore the porta potty where I used to live, you know? And we're trying to, we're trying to solve a problem. And I think of, you know, like, when the automobile first came in, it was, you know, it was hailed as a wonderful thing to stop all the horse manure on the streets, you know? So I think there's going to be a trade-off on whatever you try to do. And I think if we put them on the side of the house, that's the best, I think that's the best we can do and really enforce it, you know, just ask people.
Side, or, I mean, back or garage?
Yeah, anywhere that it's...
With the side. I think the way I read this now, it seems to me like if we said, not visible from the street in front of the house, that you could not put, it wouldn't allow the side of the house. Does everyone else interpret it that way? Because you, it's visible from the front.
Yes, you couldn't put it at the side of the house, but...
You could see it.
Not, well...
You could see it. If they put it at the side of the house, you could still, visible from the front.
Yeah, so that's why I, I would prefer to see the wording changed if I would allow
Far back from the side. Or, I mean, I don't know. You probably can't say if you have a garage, and it fits in, put it in the garage, people.
Maybe if we said, try to keep your trash barrels as inconspicuous as possible. By the side of the house is acceptable, but not preferred.
Well, I think that's too, sorry, I just think that's too wishy-washy. People are going to do what's easy for them.
The bare minimum, unfortunately, sometimes.
Do we wait till the neighbors complain and then deal with each on a case-by-case?
You have to have a basis.
I think that's what you're going to end up doing anyway, unless the council directs somebody to go around and sort of take a look. You know, other than that, it's probably like most ordinances where it's kind of complaint-driven. I mean, that's, that's kind of a popular phrase, and it's a pretty, it's a pretty common reality for lots of regulations, I think. If nobody says anything, then probably the city's not out policing it, although if the council directs that, that can happen. I can certainly take a look at some other ideas, and maybe, maybe revamp this a little bit for next month. I guess the one thing that kind of comes to my mind, other than wanting to treat owner-occupied dwellings the same as rental, that's a pretty easy concept to understand. But, I guess, so then I guess what I would ask is, what's, what are we trying to, what do we want to accomplish? You know, what do you want to accomplish?
I don't want my neighborhood to look trashed out, is what I don't want. And while I don't mind somebody putting their bins back away, far away from the front of the street, they need to be closed and not spilled or open, stuck hanging out of it all the time. I don't know.
So put that, put that on a policy. Put it in a policy that you feel comfortable with.
Behind the house would be okay, but it doesn't work for...
When we have a 10-inch snow, try to push that thing behind the house. You know what I mean? I mean, you know, usually you don't have a sidewalk going along the side of your house. It's, I'm just, I'm just going to say that's an issue. Even if you have a few inch snow, you have to push it over snow.
So, so one, one thing is, maybe we're getting to this, but behind the front line of the house, whatever the face of the house is, behind that, from the street, and then can you regulate not overflowing? I mean, is that too specific? Is that too?
Well, you can't put it out overflowing.
That's true.
I mean, you can.
And they get away with it, which I'm sure I've done it.
It has to be closed. The lid has to close. So...
Right, right. The lid has to close, yeah.
So that's, that's the way we ought to phrase it then. Lid has to be closed.
That's, that's his rule. But, so you want to rephrase it to, for the line of the house, the front line of the house?
Just what Bobby said, yeah.
On the side.
Line of sight in front of the house?
I wouldn't put a line of sight.
Well, you're still going to see it.
Yeah, you just don't want it in front of the house. I think that's the one thing.
Exactly. That's what I think. You just don't want it in front of the house.
You don't want it in the front of the house. So, so behind the front line of the house, and then the second thing is, do you want it to go there with, with the lid closed?
You have to say that?
I don't know.
You do, believe it or not.
You know, I disagree with Lisa at my peril, and realize that. So if that, if Lisa feels strongly about it, I'm, I am all for it.
So what are you typing over there?
I'm typing, so I think we'll probably make reference to what we call the front foundation line. That's what the zoning ordinance calls it. But anyway, behind the, what, what anybody would call the front of the house, you know, the front wall of the house, behind that, close the lid, not have things overflowing, and maybe some, you know, aspirational language of, you know, encourage you to keep it so you can't, it can't be seen if possible.
Put it in your garage if you have one.
Do you actually have to say that?
Paul Moore will open up his dumpster here for free, free citywide, for those extra garbage cans.
So you're going to reword it?
Yeah.
And so we need the motion. Does everyone agree to have, Bobby, you pulled the motion and the second, and everybody agrees to that?
Yeah.
And then Steve's going to write something and send it to us?
Yeah.
To send it to council, to tweak the wording, possibly.
It doesn't need like three more readings when we modify it, right?
They all require three readings. You can always collapse them if you want.
But I mean, that would be second reading.
No.
Well, no, because you have to adopt it, you know, in a form three times, so...
So, so, I mean, I know the effort was to get this consistent with the rental ordinance. So I'm feeling they should still be consistent.
Yeah. I made note of that.
Is that, okay.
I didn't say it, but that's, for whatever we, whatever changes we made to this notion, it should be in both places.
I agree, okay.
I think that's fine.
Okay. Do you have anything else, Steve?
No.
Okay, so we'll go to the city clerk report.
You all received my written report, as well as the updated rental and building permit spreadsheets. Happy to answer any questions after the meeting via email.
Okay. Thanks, Chris. Jim came, and Jim Glasgow's here to report on the hotel. And I appreciate you coming, Jim. And, oh, we got some more photos.
It's pretty hot in there.
Oh, yeah, it's hot. You have to kind of keep it.
Don't bring it to...
Apparently you have to keep it way over there, because it's like...
Okay, can you hear me all right? Perfectly, yeah. Well, while she's, while Chris is uploading that, we had a really good... Well, while she's, uh, while Chris is uploading that, um, we had a really good last two weeks over at the hotel. It hasn't been raining too much, and till it hit the other day, we were kinda nice and dry, and we got a lot done. Uh, at this point right now, we're on the rooftop of the hotel, starting the restaurant area. And we're putting up the perimeter walls there, and then later this week, we'll be, uh, putting up roof trusses and starting to sheet the roof. So, some of the, um, some of the pictures I have will show you, uh, we're digging the swimming pool right now on level one, and we're roofing some of the outcrop roofings on level one, which is the restaurant. Yeah, we can just take these pictures randomly. This is-
I'll go back, sorry.
Yeah.
Maybe, I'll go back.
This, this picture here, uh, the reason I took this really is, we're starting to put the windows in, and there's actually windows in the corner there, and we've got about twelve of the windows in now. So, we're starting to enclose the shell, and, uh, now, this is up, all the way up to the, to the rooftop restaurant. This is, this is the corner where the outside patio of the restaurant sits, up, way up at the top there. You can go to another one. This is, uh, fourth floor, and what this really shows is, the structure of the building, uh, is, is all steel. And these are heavy-gauge steel, steel studs, and this is, this is how it looks all the way from, this is third, fourth, fifth floor, um, look like this. Th- this is looking down the hallway at the individual rooms. And everything in this picture is steel and, uh, concrete. The, the floor that you're looking at there is kind of a, a fiber concrete, uh, decking. So, the, my, my point, I guess, is that this building is essentially fireproof, even without the sprinkler system. Now, this is the, this is looking at the windows, we just installed these today, and, uh, this is, this is what, this, this is one room at the corner, this is actually a suite, so it's a two-room suite. And it's, looking through those windows, you'd be looking out at Kinnick Stadium.
Oh, wow.
This is the, uh, we're digging the swimming pool here. We were kinda fighting a little bit of rain leaking down through, but, this, this is actually, this is actually the swimming pool. And it's just another shot of it there. I'm not sure how I'm gonna get my machine out of there, but- This is, uh, some, this is some of the plumbing on, on, uh, level one, and, uh, well, just, it just shows that we're, we're starting up through the building now with, with, uh, some of the drainage system. That one we've already seen, so. Now, this is actually on the rooftop of the, of the hotel, and this is, this is looking at the patio area, uh, which'll, which'll be Gray's Restaurant patio area. And as you look out over the wall of that area, you're looking right there at, at Kinnick Stadium. And you've got a great view of downtown Iowa City, and, and even the airport.
I found through them all.
Right at it?
That's it.
Okay. So, that's, that's where we are now, we're, we're, uh, going along great. I think if the, if it dries up again, I'm, we need about, about three weeks to get that roof on, and then, then the building will be dried in, and should be smooth sailing from there. Everybody, everybody keeps going, we're, I'm real happy with the, the building. I mean, it's a, just, it's a, it's a great building, it's, it's structurally built like a tank, so, uh, that's, that's the way I like them. So, if anybody's got any questions, I'll-
Are you, are you on schedule yet?
Well, you ask me, and I'll tell you the truth, you ask Greg, he'll, he'll give you, he'll give you probably the answer he wants. We're, I, I don't think we're gonna make it for the football games. I mean, we might hit kinda midstream there. Uh, it just depends how fast, uh, we've, we've got so much drywall work to do, uh, that, that's, that's usually what, what slows us down. Although we have a crew of twenty or thirty coming in, uh, and, and they're chomping at, chomping at the bit to get in there, so, we'll, we'll see.
So, everybody keeps asking me, so you're gonna say October, November?
It's, it's really hard for me to say. I, I don't wanna say anything until we get the roof on. And then, and then we can actually start planning. Tubbs and showers are, are ordered and should be here in about three weeks, and then we'll start putting, installing those.
I see.
We've got probably two months of electrical plumbing and, and interior work, but, um, like I say, it, it, I'd probably stick my foot in my mouth, if I gave you a, a date, we'll, we'll just, when we're ready, we're gonna, we're gonna open. I, I just, I don't wanna-
We'll say September then.
I mean, we wanna be ready, and, and we wanna do a good job when we open up, so we don't give a bad impression to anybody, so.
Right.
Uh, I was at a big meeting today, and several mayors came over and said, are you gonna have a big open house? That's what they're asking me.
Oh, yeah.
And I said, well, maybe, I don't know.
We get a lot of, we get a lot of, of, uh, compliments and, and about the location of this hotel, and the fact that it's really gonna be the flagship of the whole area. That, I mean, this is gonna be the hotel that drives the other hotels. And I, I, I hope they're right. I mean, I think they are, just because of this location, so. But we'll see, we're, we're gonna be aggressive. I mean, we're not, uh, we're, I don't want any empty rooms over there, and, so, we're, we're, we're going after everything, everything that we can, so.
Thank you. Thanks, Jim, for coming. Oh, Jim, here's your-
Oh, thanks.
Uh, and then, I'll go to, uh, the mayor's report, and, um, March twenty-third is the start of the leaf vacuuming. And, um, that week, and depending on the weather, you know, like rain or whatever, it'll either, hopefully it'll be in two or three days, but it could be the whole week, depending. And I think there's probably a few less leaves, so maybe it'll go faster. But, um, I'm going to put up some signs, as Virginia did, you know, just in the area, you know, down by the, uh, Triangle Park, and in the west area, and by the office, so that people know, um, Lisa has it on the website. Uh, and then April twenty-fifth, Saturday, April twenty-fifth, is the cleanup day, and that's from nine to eleven. And so, anyone who wants to volunteer for that, let me know, and, you know, the dumpsters are over there on Marietta. But more information will be coming with that. And, you know, the street sweeping, as Josiah said, will be the week before Easter, April sixth. So, that gives kind of some time to get the leaf vacuuming before, you know, a couple of weeks before that, and-
When's our cleanup day again? April twenty-fourth?
April twenty-fifth is a Saturday.
April twenty-fifth, and what-
From nine to eleven. And, um, also, um, you know, I'm on the, um, EMA, uh, executive board, and today they had a meeting, um, for Operation Center Situation Report of, uh, the coronavirus. And this is very, this is exactly what they do if there's a flood, or there's a tornado or something. And they brought in, um, um, Johnson County Public Health, the hospital representation, the different hospitals, the schools, so that everybody can, uh, be on the same page. And you'll probably see it in the, in the newspaper and in, and the press. They were bringing in the press in later. And the whole idea is to, uh, s- give out information and be all on the same page, and cut down on rumors. Because University Hospital said that they're saying that there's people over there that have the coronavirus in the hospital, and that's not true. There's all kinds of rumors. 'Cause Johnson County has seven, um, cases that are at home and doing well, but, and then there's one case in, hmm, Potawatomi County, something like that. But anyway, uh, uh, like, for example, they're trying to cut down the rumors so that everybody's on the same page, because already a hospital has tried to transfer a patient to a long care facility that was outside Johnson County, and they refused to take him, 'cause they're in Johnson County. And so, th- they have, I was very impressed with the University of Iowa. They have, um, top-notch professionals that know what they're doing, and have, um, they even have, which I didn't know, a bio-containment unit facility there, similar to the one in Nebraska. Remember when the, um, people came back from the cruise, they put them in different areas, and one of the area was Nebraska, and, and here in Iowa City, it's outstanding. And so, they do have plans, uh, and the schools have plans, and, you know, it's basically passed by contact and droplets. And so, that's why wash your hands, uh, use, uh, sanitation, uh, sprays, things like that, and keep things clean, and good common sense, and, but, they are expecting that people will get sick. And then there, there are shortages on testing, but they're gonna get test materials in too. And, uh, the governor of Iowa passed, um, disaster proclamation, so there's resources available, monies for resources for Johnson County, and, uh, this is very helpful if they need it. But, everything is going well, and they don't wanna close schools, and, and, you know, or, unless they would have to, you know? But, they're gonna stay, and then we're gonna have meetings daily at three o'clock, every day for at least the first week, to kinda, everybody stay on the same page and see how this is going, and monitoring it closely, as they would with any, um, disaster-type thing. So, anyway, they're really staying on top of it, and I wanted you to know about that. And I think, um, and I see Lori came in, and we have the treasures report. And I sent you another bill from, and I don't have my phone, but, uh, to add to it, uh- Yeah. Yeah, twenty-five thousand eight hundred. Yeah, plus fifteen, did you say?
Fifteen fifty.
Fifteen, okay, that's, and the other bill is in there, eighteen thousand. So, that's like forty-three thousand, forty-four thousand for snow removal, and I thought we'd be, you know, it's a, it's, it's, it's a big amount, but that's what it costs. So, we always budget forty thousand. I think we're gonna have to budget in the future more like forty-five or fifty, because, uh, this was a low year, and it's, and I double-checked those figures with them. And so, that's been added to the warrant list, and- No, I didn't, Steve. Oh, you have one from?
Global software, the TAC-10 maintenance reform for two thousand seven fifty-six.
And what's that for?
The TAC-10 maintenance, P, for the police.
Oh, yeah, okay, right. Okay, um, so, everyone had a chance to look at the warrants list, okay? And we added some additions. Are there any objection, yeah, two additions. Are there any objections to pay in the bills? Hearing none, the bills will be paid by unanimous consent. Okay, anything else, Lori, we needed to do? I think we're good there. And then, um, the police chief report, the police chief is in Florida right now. And Sarah, you had, you, I know you met with him.
Yeah, we've met, um, so I got an update from Troy. So, really, probably the most notable is that the Citizens Advisory Board is meeting next week for the first time, which is the, the group that was formed as part of ordinance two thirty-five prohibiting racial, and other profiling. So, this'll be the, the board that will review any, um, you know, complaints that might come in in the future. And so, yeah, Troy did a great job coordinating everyone's schedule. Unfortunately, I, I would've attended, just kind of, um, you know, informational, but, um, they're gonna proceed without me. So, he, he will be there, um, multiple members of the NAACP, including the Iowa president, the Johnson County president, and, of course, the board members and Troy. So, kind of their first order of business is to, um, come up with the procedures of their working, and then they're, per the ordinance, um, they're to then bring those to the council for, for you, so, um, kind of, most notable, I think, I'm on, yeah.
Great. Thank you. And, uh, then we'll go to Casey. We ki- did you have anything extra besides the goal-setting meeting?
I, I went to a sustainability committee meeting, well, I, and, um, I was the only one there. Uh, but the, the mayor of Solon was there, she was hosting it, and, uh, Becky Soglin was there. And, uh, it was a great benefit to me, 'cause I got to pick the, the brain of the, uh, the mayor of Solon for a while, so. It was really nice, frankly, but, uh-
Was it Kami Rasmussen?
Yeah.
She's the city manager.
Oh, and she was the mayor.
Steve Stang is, she was the mayor, and then she took a real paying job.
So, mayors, mayors actually evolve into city managers, I see.
Well, she took a paying job.
Yeah, hmm.
And, uh, she's excellent.
Yeah, she was, she was terrific. Um, and the other thing is, um, I'm having trouble understanding the, the budget. And I, I crowed about it, uh, at the last meeting, where we have the entire budget and, um, you know, what, what of it we're, we have used for the whole year. And so, if you look at this thing, um, licenses and permits, for example, by this time of the year, we've used seven months of it, um, and we're a hundred and sixty-seven point four percent over, I think. Um, and it, it made me wonder, um, i- if we actually use the seven-twelfths of our budget, then we would have, have, uh, have to use about twenty-eight percent. So, the point is that we're a lot worse off than this budget shows. And the reason is, because we're not taking the budget, dividing it by twelve, and multiplying it by the number of months. We can't do that in every instance, and for those, we can make exceptions, such as the property taxes. But, um, I think the budget would be much more comprehensible if we did that. And I, I tend to be kind of a numbers guy, and that, uh, how we're doing relative to the budget is incomprehensible to me. And everyone, I have to, I have to do the-
He's putting in the money when it comes in, and, and so, it's a timing issue.
My point is, we ta- can't show the budget twelve months' worth. We should show it for the seven months that, you know, we're, we're actually considering. Otherwise, otherwise, our guess is, you know, how this, how this pans out, we're gonna be way off. And we're not gonna be able to interpret this well. You, you look at me like you don't know what the hell I'm talking about. Is that true?
No, I'm just looking at you like, well, Steve Cool was here, and you could've asked a budget question then, and-
Could I?
So, I'm a little frustrated with that. That's my-
And, and I'm a little frustrated with, with not knowing.
And I wish, so, why don't you give him a call?
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay.
Uh, I have one other question. Um, you know, we talked about the bonding. Um, can you give me the name of that, that attorney, or would you rather call him? I'd be happy to make the call, and find out if there's something to be said for refinancing our debt, and what future debt would be financed at, what interest rate?
I'll give you all this information.
Great.
Is there any, anything else for Casey, or anything? Okay. Uh, Bobby, did you have anything?
Um, well, there's been some talk about dividing the budget into twelve months, and then projecting it out, that was, that was a joke. Uh, I really don't have anything else. Wasn't anticipating Steve taking off, uh, but, but no, other than that, not really.
Okay. Uh, Lisa, do you have something?
No, I have a written report.
Other than your, okay, your written report. Okay, any other announcements? Yeah, Paul?
I wanna say, thank you. This is the first meeting that I've really been able to hear the microphones in a P A system. And I didn't get a new hearing aid. I don't know what the difference is.
I don't either, Paul.
And I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any objection to adjournment? Hearing none, the meeting's adjourned by unanimous consent. Thank you.